Calling to order the Weaver City Council meeting, February 11th, 2013. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Kristy Davis. George Pond.
Present.
Joe Demott.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes with changes of January 28th, 2013, Mr. Starker?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to so move, there were two, um, two things that we should, uh, that the clerk brought to our attention that should be changed. On number one is the approval of the minutes instead of January 14th, 2012, should be 2013. And then in the motion of, uh, by Mr. Stites for approval of the minutes of December 10th should read January 14th, 2013.
Second.
You have motion to approve with amendments seconded by Mr. Stites, any more changes to the minutes?
Um, I do have a, have a change, I'd already written the clerk, um, feeling as though that the minutes were not complete from last, um, from our last meeting. There was a section in there that had been left out and the clerk was going to determine whether she was willing to put that in again.
Excuse me, it was the discussion of the reconsideration for the rock rezoning. And, um, there was, some of that discussion was early in the meeting and then under the agenda item, there were, I believe, three main council people who spoke. Um, that being Mr. Demott and then Ms. Langworthy and, um, Ms. J. And there, it was such a long time and I thought that once I started putting down a little bit of this and a little bit of that, it would snowball into just a whole page of, of who said what, which really the minutes aren't supposed to be. So I chose to not put anybody's comments in there, just the fact that he spoke and gave his reasons. And, um, that there was, um, no action taken. Mrs. J has asked that her comments be entered into the record and I, actually I guess right now I might refer to Mr. Dahl. Um, is, is that, um...
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Who's, who's, who, whose direction do I take, mine or someone else's?
It's an interesting dynamic, I understand. Uh, and it's a point well made that minutes are minutes, they're not a transcript. And I, I think we all, you know, struggle with that, the tension between just minutes, action minutes and a transcript. Minutes aren't a, aren't a transcript. Uh, because the council, the clerk prepares them, but because the council moves to approve them, the council can certainly move to approve the minutes with the following change or correction. And that's how I look at it, but it's the clerk's job in the first instance to make what is a subjective but important decision. How much of this constitutes minutes and at what point are we moving from minutes to a transcript? And I think on balance, you need to trust the clerk's judgment on that because otherwise you are never done deciding what's going to be in, what's going to be out. Having said that, ultimately it is the council that makes a motion to approve the minutes. So if you want to make a correction, you need to incorporate that as part of the motion to approve.
Actually, is under elected officials matters?
If, I, I would offer this, Mrs. J, if you would like to make those comments under elected officials matters, I would be glad to put them in the min- minutes.
Which was, um, the portion of, what I wanted put in the minutes was the, the comments that made under elected officials matters.
From?
From the last meeting.
I mean, put those comments rather than in the agenda item where they happen, put them under, um...
Under elected official, um, matters.
I would be, I would be glad to do that if the council would accept that.
That would be fine.
We have a motion for approval with amendments, was seconded by Mr. Stites, discussion on the mo- minutes?
I believe the second was Mr. Reinhardt.
Mr. Stites, seconded the motion.
Oh, okay.
You're voting on the ma- the motion.
Are we waiting for the amendment? Would we table it till?
Well, she did make a motion, she, she agreed to change the minutes, Mr. Starke made a motion with amendments, so we're voting on the, uh, motion as Mr. Starke made with amendments. And then she agreed to put your, make your changes in.
Comfortable with that.
So we're voting on Mr. Starke's main motion with amendments and then also that, the agreement that Ms. J or Ms. J and Ms. Shaver made.
That's good.
So please pull the council on the main motion as amended with amendments.
Motion carries eight zero.
The next item on the agenda, citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes, others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. Please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record and please state your city or your address. And please form a line if you want to speak under public comment and, uh, please spell your last name for the record.
Eugene Shirley, resident since nineteen fifty-eight.
Uh, Mr. Shirley, could you address the council, please? Thank you.
Look to you?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I will look the other side.
Because they're the ones answering your questions, maybe, right?
Oh, very good. I like living in Colorado and Wheat Ridge because they both have balanced budgets. In nineteen sixty-eight, we formed Wheat Ridge, boundaries, same boundaries, thirty thousand population, whoops, we lost two thousand. When this building was built, the city hall had solar roofs during, for a stim- with a stimulus. Uh, they didn't work, just throw it away, we, that's only taxpayers' money. Stimulus is not, uh, spending is not working. We have sixteen trillion going, I don't know how much more Wheat Ridge is going to get, but you'll see tomorrow night at the State of the Union message, you're going to see more stimulus. Our country is going downhill, we're becoming government dependent, we're becoming socialist. I've talked to several people, they are socialist, they, they enjoy it, it's going to take out capitalism in a few years. I asked the council to tax and not fee, you seem to have an idea that we should always fee. The road fees that we spend forty-one dollars for the state, I asked the legislature, why did you fee it not go to the vote of the taxpayers? Know why? Because they wouldn't vote for it. Uh, Larry Schultz, uh, gave a nice speech how to increase revenue and, uh, four out of the five issues, he said, were fees. I don't know where you get the mindset of fees. I see you snuck, snuck in a one percent fee for new developments for arts, arts and parks. How many more do we need? I wish you would start saying no. During the civic academy, man wearing says we have thirty, twenty-five parks, twenty-six maybe, how many more do you know, need? She says one, is it one at a time? We don't need anymore. Why spend more money on Thirty-Eighth Avenue project? What are we seeing the benefits? Boy, there's a lot of money being spent there, is it going to be a, i- i- it's an experiment, really. Now, Crown Hill, they got ninety, nine hundred thousand dollars, the county did, uh, which is going to be spent for improving Crown Hill. Keep it natural, I don't know why, they need to make another park out of it. Why did we waste two hundred and fifty thousand on Walgreens? Well, I know the answer to that because we didn't have a good justice, uh, attorney at the time to know what property rights were. That was a waste of time. Why spend more money on logos? You didn't need a logo, you had a good crown of Wheat Ridge. Why spend tax money on your trips to Washington DC? I asked that the, three years ago, that, that each of the council member put on the board, don't spend taxpayers' money going to Washington DC. Nobody wouldn't, wouldn't sign it, do that. Why? Because they wanted to go. It's something you knows that the tax, it's a waste of taxpayers' money.
That's time, Jean.
Fine.
That's three minutes.
I got about half a, half a dozen others, but basically, you guys gotta have to say no.
Thank you. Please step forward, spell your last name for the record.
Ronald Jensen, J E N S E N, uh, sixty-seven twenty, West Thirty-Six Place. Uh, I recently got my, um, property tax notice and, uh, uh, included in that was a, um, lien from the city of Wheat Ridge. And the lien was for gutters installed on my house that the city did. And I've been trying to find out the, um, uh, ordinance or the, um, law that says that the, I have to have gutters on my house. And I don't believe that exists and there's, I have not been able to get any answers from building department or the police department. Uh, they, they keep referring to a, um, number fifteen dash fifteen unlawful acts. And, uh, I've read that, it states things about maintaining houses and maintaining gutters and gutters can't be rusty and so on and so forth. But nothing there says you have to have gutters at all. Um, the city hired somebody to come put gutters on my house during the time when I was being hospitalized for, uh, surgery, uh, tumors and stuff, so on, removed. My thyroid was removed and I was never given a court notice or anything, there was stuff posted on my door. But, uh, I don't, I don't know how the city can put gutters on my house and bill me for it when it's not, to the best of my knowledge, uh, required by the city to do so, to, for me to have them. Besides that, the work was being done on the house until I got sick. The, the installation was, uh, very poorly done. I would like to invite the mayor and the ci- and city council members in, from District One to come and look at the house and look at the work, the shoddy work that was done by the city or the contractor they hired, who by the way, I'm looking at the complaint. Uh, Randy Zaman did the work and he also supplied the, uh, or signed the complaint against the house. I think that that's a conflict of interest. So I would, I plan on this week, uh, emailing the city and the, the mayor. I'd like people to come out and, um, look at, look at what was done there. And there's more, but with only three minutes, I feel like I, uh, maybe the city attorney could address the, uh, the fact about the, um, gutters. How can, uh, how can the city put a gutter on my house when I don't even believe it's required?
I tell you what I'm going to have you do, go ahead and talk to the city manager or Ken Johnstone, you want, you can come on right over and talk to him now if you want, they can get your name and address. Because I've never heard the city ever putting on gutters on any private property before, so talk to Mr. Goff, he can get your name and number and he can work with you on that. Mr. Goff, right here, or Ken Johnstone. Thank you. Uh, please spell your last name for the record.
I'm Jordan Mencher, M E N C H E R, thirty-five ninety-five Estes Street. Open space plans for Crown Hill improvements. I didn't hear about this until an article appeared in the Hub section of the Denver Post a few weeks ago. Crown Hill is a kind of utopia where one can go to unwind and find some respite from the world around us. It is serene, beautiful, and shared with Canada geese, ducks, and many other species of birds as well as coyotes, fox, and more. Add to this the spectacular views of the mountains and even Long's Peak, I believe, and I would submit, how do you improve on that? We are told this is an effort to get kids out into nature, are you serious? We live in a state colorful Colorado that has nature all over the place. Build rock piles for kids to climb, towers to climb? Do you know what I've seen for twenty-eight years during which I first jogged, later walked briskly, and now walk slowly? Are children on roller blades learning how to keep their balance? Children with their parents walking their dogs, children on their trikes and bikes, all of them laughing and just having a great time. They see all the nature that is already there. They watch the baby geese crossing the paths, the coyotes, and they learn from their parents that they need to keep some distance from them. And then we have joggers and adults on bicycles imagining that they're in a slow version of the Tour de France. And we have horseback riders and finally you have me and hundreds of seniors like me. We've all paid our dues and we all pretty much have some medical issues, but we still can get up to Crown Hill to walk, sit on a bench overlooking the lake and the hills, watch the geese and ducks, and forget about our illnesses and find renewed strength. And yes, we still have some fight in us. Improvements? I read somewhere that the getting kids out in nature was only a part of these improvements, what are the other parts? We still haven't seen a plan, but have been told that there will be areas for groups to aggregate, I suppose for parties or such, but we don't know. Finally, Mr. Hobie of Open Space has responded to our protest and has put a thirty-day moratorium on all work at the lake except trail work. He is also developing a survey to be sent to those who contact them. He has also hired a consulting firm to analyze the results. The most recent communication I received this morning states that we only have until Friday to let them know we wish a survey to be sent by email. I implore you, please email them and request a survey form. In closing, I would ask the mayor and city council to take this under advisement. You represent us and I would hope that your concerns would be ours. As the city of Wheat Ridge, as well as the city of Lakewood, to my understanding, work with open space in regard to Crown Hill, I trust that you will give this matter your very serious consideration. It has been said...
That's time, sir, that's time, sir, that's three minutes.
It's been said that the so-called improvements are necessary as over four hundred thousand...
That's time, sir.
...people visit this park every year. I wonder why four hundred thousand people...
That's time, sir, that's three minutes, thank you.
Think about it, it's a no-brainer.
Do we have anybody else here to speak under public comment?
This opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Do you think we have anybody else here to speak under public comment for three minutes? Now it's, uh, council's turn to go ahead and respond to any comments that were made tonight, if they wish, per council rules. Ms. J?
Mr. Shirley, you are one of the, one of our citizens that don't, do come forward and, and speak your mind and you always think that we don't pay any attention to it, but we do. We do in the sense that we're aware that, that the citizens' dollars are important to us and are important to you. And, um, we weigh all of that in mind, we go ahead and spend it, but no, we think about it, no, I'm kidding. Uh, but thank you for coming and at least expressing your, your thoughts about it.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Demott?
I just wanted to address Crown Hill real quick because we've heard hundreds of, had hundreds of calls and emails, um, and not a single one that is positive to what they're doing up there. So you have a lot of people on your side. We've spoken about it, but we have we, we haven't taken a, a stance or passed any kind of resolution, um, other than supporting the moratorium for more, uh, more time for the survey. Is, uh, did anyone express any interest in, uh, possibly looking or having someone contact the county? And I know we've, the staff has contacted the county a, a few times, probably heard more about it than they. It's taking more time than it needs to take, but, um, is there anybody that would like to address the county directly or have someone?
Right now they're in hold mode, they're taking more public comments, so I guess until the couns- the county made a, some decisions, I don't know if it's, it's right for the city to make any statements right now until they hear from the public. They put everything on hold, so. Mr. Reinhardt?
Uh, I, I agree with Mr. Mayor, I think that with the, without, until they've made a decision on how they'd like move forward, for us to be preemptively giving them advice seems premature to me. But I, I think if, uh, they move forward with this much opposition, we may want to take it up at that time.
Mr. Goff, did you know they're having a series of public meetings at the county, right? That's coming up?
Correct.
And they put everything on hold except the trail?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from city council? Oh, Ms. Shaver, did you have a, oh, a letter to read into the record?
I thought, I thought you wanted me to read it under elected officials matters at the very end of the meeting. There, there's a letter here, um, that has asked to be read into the record from Joan Blanchard. Um, she's a citizen of District One. Um, "To Mayor DeTulio and members of the city council of Wheat Ridge, an overdue response to the beautification of Thirty-Eighth Avenue," that is in quotes. "The changes in the streets' allocation to a possible garden venue and to increase patronage of businesses along the route thus far, I do not believe have been realized. Their reality appears to be congestion of traffic occurs not only at peak hours, but at other extended times of the day. A major difficulty in crossing Thirty-Eighth or onto Thirty-Eighth from cross streets that do not have a light. An increasing presence of broken glass from vehicular mishaps perhaps on the Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Back-end parking, which is difficult with the amount of traffic on this street. Concrete planters appearing to be a target as many are losing sections of cement. Signs on these planters also appear to be targets as there are dents appearing on them more often. Larger planters offering possible seating are becoming unsightly as the debris from the streets splashes on them. And with accidents, no one feels safe sitting in them. Traffic is diverting to our neighborhoods to avoid the long waits for getting onto Thirty-Eighth Avenue or just driving down Thirty-Eighth. This is creating an unsafe situation as people are driving faster to get where they are going. Thirty-third has a big dip and as drivers who are unaccustomed to driving the street are speeding, they hit the dip with a terrific bang. Speeding on Thirty-third and Thirty-Fifth makes it unsafe for people who walk their dogs, have babies or small children in strollers, or children on scooters or bicycles, which is putting them at risk for injury. Bicyclers are not using the bike paths created on Thirty-Eighth Avenue because of traffic and safety issues. They are using Thirty-second, Thirty-third, and Thirty-Fifth to go to Golden as part of their route. The center lane can become congested at peak times as people try to get where they are going. I observed a driver taking a shortcut to a side street through a business parking lot due to the slowness of traffic moving down Thirty-Eighth Avenue this week. Enhancing the street's beauty and business access would be better served by making it more efficient as a major thoroughfare from Denver to Applewood. The drivers of all vehicles, RTD buses, school buses, ambulances, police squad cars, fire trucks, postal service, as well as automobiles, would greatly appreciate a return of Thirty-Eighth Avenue to being a major thoroughfare. Adjacent neighborhoods would appreciate a return to less traffic and safer streets. Sincerely, Joan Blanchard, Wheat Ridge, Colorado."
Thanks, uh, I'm going to have to ask, we're hearing some chatter from the back from the, uh, female radios, can you turn them down or turn them off? I know you're probably with an emergency group, but it's feeding back up here, I'd appreciate it. I'd appreciate it. Thanks. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing that we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading, I'm gonna open the public hearing on Council Bill Number 01-2013.
Okay, Council Bill Number 01-2013, An Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 4335 Harland Street from Restricted Commercial RC to Mixed Use Neighborhood MUN, Case Number WZ12-10 Fernandez. The applicant is requested, is requesting approval of a zone change from Restricted Commercial RC to Mixed Use Neighborhood, which is MUN, for property located at 4335 Harland Street. The proposed rezoning area includes one parcel, the total size of which is approximately .29 acres. The purpose of the zone change is to expand possible uses for the property, including the option of converting the existing structure back to residential occupancy. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new development or modifications to the site. If the property is redeveloped in the future under the proposed MUN zoning, an administrative site plan review would require, would be required to confirm that proposed development meets the standards of the Mixed Use Zone District.
The city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
I think this is 1532. I apologize, I'm not prepared for that number, but I think it's 1532.
And I need to swear everybody, and if you're here to speak on item number one, please stand and raise your right hand. That's it? Please, do you swear to tell the truth in this manner? Thank you. Do we move on to staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also note that the public notice for this public hearing has been properly published for the public hearing. This is a rezoning request for property as, as Councilwoman Jay noted at 4335 Harland Street. It's a request to change the zoning from restricted commercial to mixed use neighborhood, and I do have a real short presentation. Some aerial photography of the property outlined in, in kind of this brightish blue is the property in question. This is Harland Street. North is to the top of the slide, and you see that this is 44th Avenue is the closest cross street, and it's about, it's about three lots to the south of that intersection. And of course, the town of Lakeside is, is located at that northeast corner of, of the intersection of 44th and Harland as well. So this is kind of on the far east side of, of our community. Here's that same aerial photography with the zoning map overlaid. The property in question, located here, is zoned RC, Restricted Commercial. Quite a few other properties in the general vicinity are also zoned RC. There is some residentially zoned property in, in kind of the greenish color there that's zoned R2. This is R3, and then there is also some just more general C1 commercial property right at the corner of 44th and Harland. This is looking to the west from Harland Street at the subject property. You can see it's a 50s-era, single-family residential structure when it was originally built, some mature vegetation on this property and on some of the adjacent properties as well. This is a more recent view of the property. Again, very much a 50s-era ranch. I think it was actually built in 1954. You can see on the left portion of this slide, the carport and also the driveway that's the access to the rear portion of the property. If you noted on the aerial photography that the rear portion of the property is actually largely paved. The property has been most recently used commercially, and that served as the commercial parking lot, and, and that is the access to that commercial parking lot under that Looking kind of to the southwest down Harland, you can see that there is kind of a mix of commercial and residential uses. Several of the adjacent properties are, albeit the structures may have been residential at one point in time, but generally many of the properties are used commercially. So the, the essence of the zone change is from restricted commercial to mixed use neighborhood. This slide just outlines what you can and can't do in those respective zoning districts. Essentially, the intent here is, as has been mentioned already, is to allow the structure which has been used most recently commercially to also be allowed to be used residentially. The property owner actually has expressed an interest in potentially doing that fairly soon, converting the, the structure back to residential use. And you can see from the street, it still has very much a residential character. So under the existing zoning, under the, the RC zoning, if it were an existing residential use, it could remain, it could also be converted to commercial. But in this case, with an existing commercial use, that commercial use can remain. They could add an accessory, very small residence, but you cannot convert it back to residential because that's not a permitted use, except in very limited circumstances in the RC zoning. Now, in the mixed use neighborhood zoning, as council is aware, it's fairly flexible in terms of permitted uses, a limited range of service uses and commercial uses, as well as residential or a mix on the same lot of both residential and commercial uses. So that is the additional flexibility that's desired in going to the MUN. Now, should the property redevelop in the future at some point, the property would also be subject to the mixed use neighborhood design standards, all those design requirements that we think, you know, should that happen, would also be very compatible with the neighborhood in terms of ensuring that the, the design of the site and the design of any structures on the site would be of a high quality. Just briefly, the comprehensive plan for Harland envisions, envisions this as a neighborhood commercial corridor, as you can see from that graphic with the red commercial denotation. Envision Wheat Ridge very much encourages a mix of uses on all of our commercial corridors, and certainly a variety of housing options are encouraged. So we think all those goals of the comprehensive plan would be met with this proposed rezoning. We, we do recommend approval of the request. I would note that the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing back on December 6th. They too forward a recommendation of approval for council's consideration. We, we believe that the MUN is supported by applicable planning documents for the area and compatible with surroundings, as I, as I've noted. I mean, I think this corridor, Harland, like many of our commercial corridors, it, it really is already by definition mixed use, as you can see from the slides or if you've driven the, the corridor recently. So we think that MUN is very much in line with, with the existing development pattern in the area. That's all for me. Be glad to answer questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything, wish to add anything to the comments? Let the record show the applicant was not, did not want to make any comments to council. Move on to council questions and discussion? Mr. Reinhardt?
Mr. Johnston, would you help me out? If they simply changed the use without making a, they can now, they could, if we approve the zoning tonight or whenever it comes into effect, they could simply move in. Is that, it would not trigger any, necessarily any regulatory review?
That's correct.
And short of some new application, there's no reason, you know, it's, it's nonconforming in terms of setbacks and so forth under the new zone district, so it's, I suppose, essentially grandfathered in its current configuration unless you change the exterior and, or make some other land use application?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
Any other questions or comments? Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order?
I move to approve, I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2013, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning of Property Located at 4335 Harland Street from Restricted Commercial RC to Mixed Use Neighborhood MUN on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. City council has conducted a proper public hearing meeting. All public notice requirements are required by Section 26109 of the Code of Laws. Requested rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. Requested rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-12 or 112-E of the Code of Laws.
Second. We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Mr. Demott. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item two is Resolution Number 10-2013. Councilmember Langley?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 10-2013, A Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2013 Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation for the Reappropriation and Reencumbrance of 2012 Fiscal Year Encumbered Funds in the Amount of $802,682.32. At issue, there are 35 open purchase orders from the 2012 budget that need to be carried over into the 2013 budget. Each purchase order is associated with a specific project that was not fully completed in the 2012 fiscal year. The funds which were encumbered for these purchase orders were transferred to the unreserved fund balance of the relevant fund when the purchase orders were closed. To continue these projects in 2013, a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $802,682.32 is necessary to allow transfer of these funds into specific budget line items in the 2013 budget. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 10-2013, A Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2013 Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation for the Reappropriation and Reencumbrance of the 2012 Fiscal Year Encumbered Funds in the Amount of $802,682.32.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, was seconded by Mr. Demott. Discussion on item two? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item three is Resolution Number 09-2013. Alderman Davis?
Thank you. Resolution Number 10-2013, A Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2013 Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation. Oops, I read the wrong one. Never mind. Got it. Never mind.
Item three?
Yeah, item three. Sorry, I didn't flip my page. Resolution Number, at least I caught it myself, 09-2013.
Was he paying attention?
Yeah, see? I was, that's what I was doing it for, to see if you were paying attention. Resolution Number 09-2013, A Resolution Approving the Renewal and Amendment of an Intergovernmental Agreement for Ambulance Services Among the City of Wheat Ridge, the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and the Rural Metro of Central Colorado Doing Business as Pride Mark Paramedic Services. Effective on January 1st, 2012, an Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between the City of Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and the Rural Metro Ambulance, Pride Mark Paramedic Services, was approved by the City Council. The purpose of the IGA is to ensure the availability of high-quality emergency ambulance service within the entire corporate limits of the City of Wheat Ridge and the response boundaries of the fire district. The purpose of the requested City Council action is to approve the renewal of the IGA for the calendar year 2013 and to amend Section 2.2 recitals and purpose of the IGA to include the City of Edgewater in the defined response area for the fire district. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 09-2013, A Resolution Approving the Renewal and Amendment of an Intergovernmental Agreement for Ambulance Services Among the City of Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and Rural Metro of Central Colorado Doing Business as Pride Mark Paramedic Services LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion? Mr. Demott?
I was just noticing that the police chief and commander Cassell were still out in the hallway talking to Mr. Jensen about, do we need them for anything? Or unless anybody has any questions, sort of.
I'm, I'm familiar with the agreement. If you've got questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't have any questions in particular. I was just wondering.
I would like to make one comment.
Ms. Davis?
I just wanted to make one additional comment that in our study session, we reviewed some numbers, response times, and, and as far as some parameters that was, was in place for the contract, and all, all that information was very valuable, and the response time and the overall community is, is very happy with Pride Mark Services, so I do want to say that.
Mr. Dahl, do you have any comments?
No, nothing further. I thought the summary was very complete. There's only two things. You were renewing it and extending it to include the City of Edgewater.
So we had a motion, it was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. One more year. Item four, Alderman Starker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four is entitled, A Motion to Award ITB 13-02 2013 Crack Seal Project to Superior Asphalt Magna, Utah, in the Amount of $47,600, with a contingency amount of $2,380. At issue on this item, the 2013 Crack Seal Project will provide street maintenance throughout the city by priority. The crack filling treatment will reduce water infiltration under the pavement and extend the pavement life of these streets as part of an ongoing maintenance program. This project is the first of three preventive maintenance projects that the city will implement this year. On January 23rd, 2013, eight bids were received for the 2013 Crack Seal Project. All bids met the initial bid requirements, with six out of the budget range. The apparent low bidder was Superior Asphalt Magna, Utah, in the total amount of $47,600. The company's references and experience were evaluated by Public Works staff as a basis for their recommendation. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
Well, that being the case, then I move toward ITB-13-02 2013 Crack Seal Project to Superior Asphalt Magna, Utah, in the amount of $47,600, with a contingency amount of $2,380, and that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to the total contract contingency amount of $49,980.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, was seconded by Councilmembers Davis and Jay, I believe. Discussion on the main motion? Mr. Demott?
On reading these bids, I can see that Superior Asphalt out of Utah is the lowest by, you know, about $2,000, little less than $2,000. My question is, why do we use an out-of-state? I mean, we're basing it, obviously, they were the low bidder, they were, and I appreciate you picking the low bidder, but I noticed one, I mean, there's two from Utah, six from Colorado. The next highest bidder is from Arvada, Colorado. Was there a problem with coatings incorporated? That we couldn't use them? I just, you know, wondering if the company's from Utah and you do hit some weather problems and they keep coming back and forth, back and forth, eventually, you know, the service wouldn't be what it would be when they can just, if they're right across the street, they can come in when the weather permits. Is that something that could make for a better end product, better result?
We don't believe so. This particular contractor does a lot of work in Colorado, and so we believe that we should get the, the best value for the city, and if we can save $2,000, we're gonna save you $2,000. We don't believe that we're at risk by having hired a company out of Utah. The company out of Arvada has done the work, I think, the last three years, and so that's what makes for competition and free enterprise. We, we certainly have no problem taking the second low bid, but using our criteria, we find no reason not to give it to the low bidder in this case.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Peranto, do we have any Wheat Ridge regulations or state regulations that we are, are party to that, that call for Colorado labor, a preference for that, Colorado labor to be part of that?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Dahl? If a council member made a motion to amend for a different contractor, that's been done in the past, correct?
Yes, it has, it's been quite some time, but it, it has been done.
And it's, it's, I mean, it's parliamentary-wise and code-wise, it's legal to do, right?
Yes, I mean, our, our, our standards require the city to take the lowest, most responsive bidder, which, as I'm sure council understands, allows you in some cases, in appropriate cases, to take a bidder that is not the lowest based upon other factors that make that that not the lowest bidder more responsive and that's, that's why there is that flexibility and occasionally that has happened.
Just to clarify then and confirm that Superior Asphalt, in fact, was most responsive as well as lowest, I guess I just need clarification on the hundred dollars for traffic control management, which looks like an anomaly across it, so I just want to make sure that, in fact, their traffic control management plan was considered responsive on, on your part.
Yes, it's, it's not uncommon that we see unbalanced bids in certain, certain items.
Did anybody want to make an amendment? Or leave the motion as stand as stated? Mr. Demott?
You know, I wasn't really searching for a, for a motion to amend this more than just a question, but, um, you know, I do, as long as, as far as the traffic control management there is, there's bids from ten thousand dollars at the highest to a hundred dollars at the lowest. I just, um, I mean, I, I've seen, we've seen the work that coatings incorporated from Arvada has done and, uh, I'm just, you know, I, I feel that maybe we, we should use a more local contractor. And not that I, I mean, I've never seen any work from Superior Asphalt, not knocking them at all, but, um, I, uh, I would like to make a motion. And maybe we could have some more further discussion.
Mayor, if I could, if I could, too, when I have a chance, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, go ahead and make your comment.
I was just going to say that, you know, I, I advise council to be a little cautious with this. We do have a pretty tight purchasing practice, um, which we follow. You know, I think if you choose a different company based on, on location, which is not a requirement in our current policy, we may get a protest, um, which we'd have to defend.
I have to say that I've worked in this type of contracting for a long, long time and I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that we would be, um, taking an action outside of our protocols and, you know, I've worked, the term low, responsive, responsible bidder has governed this type of contracting practices for the, you know, thirty-plus years I've been doing it now and, and I would, I believe we should award this. Somebody in good faith came in, they invested their money and their time in preparing a bid for us and I think that by the terms of our, our protocols, the low, responsive, responsible bidder should be awarded the contract.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, yeah, I'm not pushing for any certain company, I just wanted more discussion and clarification on it. And, uh, no, I do not wish to make a motion.
So we have a main motion as stated in the pack. It was seconded by, I believe, two councilmembers. Any other questions on item number four? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item five, Alderman Stites?
Yeah, this is always my yearly favorite. I'd like to introduce motion to approve the purchase of the two thousand thirteen vehicle replacements and accessory equipment in the amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Staff recommends the purchase of the following vehicles under the stated Colorado price agreements. One, two thousand thirteen Dodge Durango, all-wheel-drive SSV, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. One large, two thousand thirteen Ford F-150 XL, four-by-four crew cab pickup at twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. One large, two thousand thirteen Chevy, fifteen-hundred cargo van, seventeen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. One large Chevy Silverado, twenty-five-hundred, four-by-four extended cab pickup with plow package, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. One, two thousand thirteen Chevy Silverado, thirty-five-hundred, four-by-four cab and chassis with dump bed body package, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and six dollars for a total cost of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Staff also requests approval to purchase, install or relocate auxiliary equipment required for the operation of the replacement vehicles along with the installation of lighting markings and communication equipment at a total cost of fourteen thousand. The total expense of the vehicles, including preparation for use, is not to exceed a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Are motions in order?
Can I have some questions or?
Go ahead, well, normally we take, we take a motion first, that's kind of the protocol. Then you can amend it later.
Okay.
You don't have to make the motion in the package, you could move it to something else.
Patrick's holding his breath.
Well, I have several questions, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve the purchase of the two thousand thirteen vehicle replacements and accessory equipment for a total cost of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. I further move to approve the expenditures of not to exceed fourteen thousand for the purchase, installation and/or relocation of auxiliary equipment required for the operation of vehicles along with the installation of markings and communication equipment.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as stated in the pack. It was seconded by Mr. Pond, Mr. Stites?
Now, I got questions since it didn't go through a study session. One, we're replacing a, uh, two thousand seven Ford F-150 XL with high mileage. What's that?
This is an undercover vehicle the, the police special investigation unit uses and that, uh, they need, they need a good reliable piece of equipment and so this was actually a, a vehicle that is probably the highest priority of, of the group.
And then two, uh, you have a, uh, the cargo van that's replacing the nineteen ninety-eight cargo van in the investigations department?
Yes, that's their little crime van. It doesn't, it only is driven about six thousand miles a year, but it's just by, by age, is in poor shape. It's not, not by use, but it's driven very little, but then it's sat, sits and idles when it's, uh, taken to a crime scene.
Then, you know, you've got some for parks here, uh, nineteen ninety-seven large Chevrolet K twenty-five-hundred. What's the mileage on that?
Um, which one are you looking at, the, uh?
Says one new model, two thousand thirteen large Chevrolet Silverado, twenty-five-hundred, four-by-four extended cab with a plow package will be purchased from da-da-da-da to replace one existing high-mileage nineteen ninety-seven large Chevy K twenty-five-hundred.
Right. Um, let me find it on my list here. Three oh two. Three oh two. Is, um, that truck has ninety thousand miles. It's the pickup with the plow and, and maybe if I have something I can pass out, might help as well. What is being passed out is the evaluation sheet on the worst of the worst of the vehicles and it shows some of the criteria that we use in making those evaluations. The pickup plows take very, very hard use and so that happens to be one that we need as a reliable vehicle in the parks department. That's why it's being proposed for repair at this, a replacement at this time. And you can see it's an old sixteen-year-old truck, even though it has less than a hundred thousand miles. Those are all very hard miles.
Okay, how about unit three fifteen?
Three fifteen, that's that one-ton little white dump that you see parks running around town. That's probably the heaviest used vehicle that they have and it's the, the dump body is, and the hydraulics are, are getting in bad shape. It has, as you see, only sixty thousand miles, but has been worked tremendously hard over the nineteen years that it's been in service.
But none of these pickups could be shifted down, uh, because you're, uh, there's one, where is it, uh, there's no, oh, unit one hundred.
Unit one hundred's a little S-ten, twenty-year-old S-ten. It's got almost a hundred thousand miles. It's got ninety-three on it, you can see when we did this report a couple of months ago. And it's just, uh, you know, again, had very hard use. That's one of the vehicles that they're using now and have the summer help used to transport themselves, uh, for mowing and it's, it has had extremely hard use over, over its life and uh, as you can also see, the, uh, we've put about five thousand dollars in, in expense in it over the last five years and we expect that to continue to, to go up. It's, it's just a real rough truck at this point.
But none of these pickups that they're replacing could be shifted down to take that's, that pickup's place?
We don't believe so, no. They need, they need to come out of the, the fleet. We, we need to get some fresh vehicles into the fleet. We've done that with a couple of things. We took the Suburban last year, the, uh, when we retired the Suburban from the court martial, the Suburban went into the parks department and it's being used. We do, we do reuse the vehicles in that manner. These we really do need to get rid of. They're, they're down, down quite a bit. Just going to cost us a lot of money to keep them in the fleet.
So I can understand that, but even this van that we're replacing for the police department, couldn't that van be shifted down? Because it's only got...
Well, it's got oil pressure problems and to try to even just diagnose what's going on with that one at this point in time, we don't think it's, it has, it's not worth doing that market value and that truck is very minimal. Yeah, we really don't have another use for that van.
Yeah, something's going on, it's only got forty-four thousand miles.
I understand. It doesn't have any miles, I agree with you.
Well, I don't know. And then I see we got a asphalt patch truck coming in here pretty soon to the two hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, it's, that's, we're putting that out to bid in the next week and that's your primary truck to keep the streets repaired. So if we don't have that machine working and it, the, the patch unit on that truck's in, in very poor condition, so...
And then these trucks that we're putting the dump beds on, would it be more cost efficient to go diesel instead of gas? In the long run?
We don't believe so because we don't put a lot of miles on them. If we, these were high-mileage vehicles, then we could justify and warrant diesels. Where, where we run them so minimally, the engines hold well because of the low miles. If we were running our vehicle fleet of trucks in the two hundred thousand mile range would justify putting them in and we don't need the power as well. So the other reason to have diesel would be that we need power for towing and pulling and we don't have that need either.
That's what concerns me with some of this stuff because we're replacing these with some really, you know, fifty-nine thousand, forty-four thousand, uh, eighty-nine thousand. I thought we had boosted that up to like a hundred and twenty-five thousand before, on the mileage policy.
A hundred and twenty thousand is the, uh, is the, uh, the new number for light trucks and pickups. I'm sorry, light, light trucks and, and passenger cars. And, um, but as you can see from the handout I've just given you, these, some of these don't meet that criteria, but they're in such poor condition, we're still recommending their replacement.
This list is really the worst of the worst. Ever since I've been doing the budget for the city, I've asked Tim to keep it as conservative as possible. We do have a unfunded list, I think of.
You want, you passed that out as well, there's the, there's the two million dollar list that we really...
Close to two million that are...
That we really should be trying to replace.
Do you mind if I call on Christine? Christine, thank you. Ms. Davis and then I'll come back to Ms. Langberly.
I ju, I just have a question, well, Mike asked a lot of my questions, but I guess one of the things is especially hearing that some of these cars are pooping out at forty-four thousand miles. The, the first recommendation was the two thousand thirteen Dodge Durango and that's going to be switched and given to the police chief and then his two thousand six Trailblazer, um, is going to replace the two thousand one high-mileage Honda Accord. I guess my only question or thought is, is, uh, for lots of different reasons, I think Hondas are more gas-efficient and quite frankly, run higher miles more efficiently. That why don't we get a similar type car, uh, for this? This, you know, it, it sounds like it's for the investigations division, but I think, one, hate to say it, I'm saying it out loud, but it's, Honda can be a pretty reliable car and, and as far as gas mileage, it's usually better on gas mileage too than some of these big ol' Dodge Durangos and F-150 trucks and if, by the looks of it, they are higher, higher mileage cars that we don't just replace it with a like type of car and then when needed, the two thousand six Trailblazer could be replaced. I mean, at least we're also being conscientious energy-wise and...
Yes, and we did, we did take a look at that and the reason we're suggesting the replacement of the police chief's vehicle is that there's a desire to get a four-wheel, an extra four-wheel drive vehicle in the police fleet. This would allow that to occur. Secondly, the police chief is one of the drivers that don't put a lot of miles on their vehicles and so we could freshen the fleet up by rotating his vehicle down into his staff and then, uh, have a, a better car for his staff to drive and then use and get the miles on it before, to make better total use of the, of the truck because if we leave it with the police chief, we're going to probably end up at a point where we have very little miles and the, and the vehicle's going to be needing replacement because of it being outdated. So this way, we think it's, by rotating some of our vehicles down to higher mileage drivers, we can make better implementation of the fleet in general. But we did talk about that. They, as far as Hondas, we typically agree with you, except that when the city bought all these two thousand one Hondas, we happened to get the lemon Honda Accord year and so these all have, uh, bad transmissions. There were three or four replaced under warranty and we've had two of them that we've had to, uh, that we've taken out of service because the cost of a new transmission exceeded the value of the, of the vehicle in the last two years.
Which is typically unusual with Honda.
It is, but it just, like I say, just turned out that we got a, we wanted a lemon.
Ms. Langberly?
I just have a question because I was driving around town. One of our parks truck has a nice giant rust spot on the side. Is, is one of these vehicles you're replacing that one?
No idea. No idea.
You don't know for sure?
Don't have the number right.
I don't know, I, I didn't see the number. I just know that it was driving through town, and it doesn't really display well for us if we have vehicles with, and it's not like on the side or down low, or it's, it's right up by the emblem where you can't exactly miss the rust spot, and so, and it's a big hole. And so I, I, I guess I know that you don't know the answer to that, but it would be good to know if this is one of those, because that really reflects poorly on the city to have vehicles going through where you can see the damage. 'Cause that, what does it say about us, that we're not, you know?
Says we're thrifty.
I would, I would, I would go beyond thrifty and, and say cheap if, if we can't maintain our vehicles from keeping rust spots, but...
So we have a, a main motion by Mr. Steitz. Anybody wanna make any amendments? Mr. Steitz, you can amend his own motion, too, I suppose.
No. I'd be glad to make any amendment to you, that would, if you would prefer someone to make it for you, but I thought under the rules, you can't amend your own motion.
He can't, but, but...
Wait, wait, I'm willing to let... I move to suspend the rules so that Mr. Steitz can amend his own motion.
So we have a motion to suspend rules, and we need a second on that. Is there a second?
That's actually the quick, correct procedure.
We have a motion to suspend rules to allow Mr. Steitz to make any amendments to his own motion. That takes six votes to pass. So please poll the council on the motion to suspend rules.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Okay, I move to amend.
This is, you know, uh, for me, very tough, 'cause it goes against the grain, getting rid of low-mileage cars, I tell you. It really does, it, uh... And then I would really have rather seen this brought through a study session, but, so we wouldn't have to go through this on a dais, but, um...
You could move to send it back to study session, if you'd like, Mike.
Yeah, I really would rather do that, because I'd really like to take a look at these. So I would, uh, uh...
Move to postpone it to a study session.
Yeah, would move to postpone this to a study session.
Is there a second? Sorry, Jerry. Oh, second.
We have a motion to postpone the vehicle purchase to the most, the next available study session? Next study session? Second by Mr. Starker. Mr. Pond?
Yeah, I just would ask the obvious question, if there's anything that's time-sensitive, um, that can't obviously wait, uh, just so we're being prudent with the effort here and what you have in front of you for procurement.
No, we could, this, this can wait.
Thank you.
We have a motion to postpone to a study session, seconded by Mr. Starker. Please poll the council on the postponement.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Item six, Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is a motion to approve funding from the fiscal year two-thousand-and-thirteen Economic Development Budget to reflect the approval of ninety thousand dollars for the Wheat Ridge Business District Revitalization Incentive Grant Program. There's some pretty short background on here, but I'd like to say I'm, I'm a member of the Business District, and, um, in the years past, we've mainly done sign grants, facade grants, and, uh, we've generally gotten between the forty and fifty thousand-dollar range in our budgets. This year, the ninety thousand dollars, um, reflects our newest program also, which includes, uh, accessibility grants, which Mrs. Davis brought to us, um, last year. Um, and it's been not the, not highly used yet, but it's been one of the most successful and, and, um... And, uh, I, I don't remember the numbers, but it, you know, businesses and property owners can get up to five thousand dollars for, uh, making their properties more handicap-accessible. Um, and that ninety thousand is, is in there to add to that.
Oh, Mr. Demott? I think we need a motion first, before you speak on your, on your item, please.
That was a super extended background on that.
I have to be fair to everybody, I didn't, I wouldn't let Mike do it, so...
I move to approve funding in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the Wheat Ridge Business District Revitalization Incentive Grant Program for fiscal year two-thousand-and-thirteen.
Now, okay, we have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmembers Reinhardt and Jay, so Mr. Demott? Now, you're not gonna say nothing?
Oh, now I'm done, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Item eight, Alderman Reinhardt?
We skipped seven?
Oops, oops, item seven, sorry. Item seven, Mr. Pond?
Thank you. A motion approving a contribution in the amount of two-thousand-fifty-five dollars to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health for their fifty-fifth anniversary Emerald Celebration. The mayor is requesting that the city sponsor the fifty-fifth anniversary Emerald Celebration for the Jefferson Center for Mental Health on April twenty-first, two-thousand-and-thirteen. Sponsorship opportunities include the purchase of one table for ten guests at the two-thousand-fifty-five-dollar Sapphire level or the five-thousand-fifty-five-dollar Ruby level, or the purchase of two tables for twenty guests at the ten-thousand-fifty-five-dollar Emerald level. Is a motion ordered?
Motion's in order.
Uh, before I do this, I'll just say I'll entertain amendment and/or discussion regarding the amount of committed funds for this move to approve a contribution in the amount of two-thousand-fifty-five to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health for their fifty-fifth anniversary Emerald Celebration.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Ms. Langberly?
Thank you. Um, I, I know that under the issue, it doesn't state this, but the, the city now has three thousand dollars in our legislative budget to help pay for table sponsorships. And if we use the full two thousand, and I'm all in support of this, but if we use the full two-thousand-fifty-five, we have ten year, ten months left in our year with less than a thousand dollars for table sponsorships. And we're, we're constantly being asked throughout the year to do table sponsorships. And I would, while I, I support it, and I'd be willing to help offset two thou- the two-thousand-fifty-five with part of my funds, I'd like to try to see the city impact on this a little bit less than that, just only because there's a lot of good programs out there, a lot of people who ask for assistance, and I wanna make sure we kinda divide that three thousand as evenly amongst it all, and spread it out through the whole year and not just two-thirds of it in February.
So you're saying you're willing to contribute some towards...
I'm willing to contribute some towards the two-thousand-fifty-five so that, you know, the city impact is lowered.
Oh, 'cause that the...
I don't wanna...
Towards a five-thousand-dollar table.
Well, the, I don't wanna, I mean, a five-thousand-dollar table, if the city paid, would eat up our full three thousand dollars in one setting, and it would still require two-thousand-and-fifty-five dollars from the rest of us. Whereas I think, um, Patrick had said when this first come up, that it's, it's a challenge, and it's a challenge for all of these events, it's not just this one event, it's all events. It's a challenge to get eight or ten people to attend a function. And I'm not sure that, you know, I guess if I thought that we were, so many people were requesting it, and that we needed a second table, that we could come back and ask for that, but I don't wanna assume we're gonna have enough people for two tables when we barely, or at least in my five-so years, have ever had enough to get one. So I would be willing to give towards that two thousand.
Ms. Davis?
I actually, also looking at this, would like to entertain the idea, because I do recall in the study session, the discussion of filling a table, and sometimes it's difficult, and then we go back into Mr. Shirley's comments about, um, how we're spending our money. But I would even like to entertain the idea of donating, you know, even if it's the two thousand, even if it's the twenty-five-hundred as a sponsor, and not necessarily take the table, so that that would be more money for, for the program. Um, that way, they don't have to pay the forty-five dollars per plate, the four-hundred-and-fifty, so they'll just net more money. Um, so that would be another, uh, thought that I'd like to throw out there, that we just donate the dollars and not necessarily have to get the table, just to give the, the foundation or, or Jefferson County, uh, the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, more money that they can actually use, rather than have to pay for our meals.
Mr. Demott?
You know, I've, I've looked into the Jefferson Center, and I think it's an incredibly important asset that we have in the city, um, in the, in the county. I would be willing to contribute over and above, um, even the two-thousand-fifty-five to see if we had enough people to reach the five thousand from our own, um, outreach budgets. Um, we each get fifteen hundred, uh, a year, and I know in years past, we've given much more than three thousand dollars. I don't know what our total outreach is this year. We didn't get a breakdown sheet, or was that what we decided total? It would be... I know there was a...
For outside agencies? We, we just, we had ten thousand dollars available. I think we divided that up amongst, I don't know, twelve different organizations, maybe?
The three over and above?
Three thousand's a separate, new, in this year's budget to, to, um, for table sponsorships.
You know, and, and I agree with, with you, we need to be as conservative as possible, but, um, in this case, their, you know, their budget was very, was cut by the county. Um, and this being their fifty-fifth year that they've been helping, uh, you know, on the other end of our three-thousand-dollar sponsorship money that we have, if we do the two-thousand-fifty-five, we would only have nine-hundred-and-forty-five left. I would say use the whole three thousand. If something comes up later, that we would, we can always amend our own budget. If something were to come up, um, that we cared about as much as we care about this, and I would still, I would still be willing to kick in to try to reach that, reach that amount if anyone were interested.
Yeah, my request wasn't for two tables, but for one table at the Ruby level, and then that, I, I was hoping that the, the council would approve the full three thousand for the table, and then Mr. Demott and I would, would supplement that three thousand to reach the five thousand. I've talked to a few council people that would, willing to kick in some of their public outreach, so that, we were trying to go for one table at five because of their budget cuts, because they're in a, they're a business in the city of Wheat Ridge, a nonprofit. Ms. Jay?
The Jefferson County Mental Health is very much an agency that's doing a wonderful job for us. There were three major agencies that received severe cuts, uh, Leaning Tree, Senior Resource Center, there was about six-hundred-and-eighty, Family Tree, excuse me, there was six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars total cuts, and four-hundred thousand of that was felt by Family Tree, and they've had to cut programs. Senior Center has had to, um, close one of their, um, visitor centers. So we really do, if, if we can help any of these, I, I think it's really plus. I'm kind of liking the idea of giving them the donation without the, um, requiring, you know, without the table, so that they don't, you know, they don't have the cost of the table.
I do know they wanted Wheat Ridge to be there because of the, they're in Wheat Ridge, and they, it's been a good partnership between the city of Wheat Ridge and Jefferson Center for Mental Health. I don't think they just wanna check and then no one's there from the city, you know? So my, my, my suggestion was three thousand dollars from that, that fund, being supplemented by hopefully myself and Mr. Demott and some other council people, and then if you ever had to come back and do another table sponsorship, you could amend your budget in the future. That was my suggestion, so...
Yeah, just, just so, and since I picked this sort of, in as a sort of middle-of-the-road starting point, let me just speak a little bit to it. It seemed, um, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't wanna support this organization, and I agree with the mayor that there is some support that comes from our attending as well as just writing checks. Um, and I was trying to, and, and, but five thousand seemed like such, to me, like such an overreach for us compared to what we've done for other organizations at other times, that this seemed to accomplish both purposes to me, and that's why just to have a starting point for this discussion, that's how I settled on that particular recommendation. It got us in, it's from this budget, it leaves us some room to work without doing deeper, and, and it just felt like more than we've had done traditionally, so, um, I, just sort of, for people thinking, that was the logic to this particular motion and how it ended up in the package, so...
Um, just going back to a request or a suggestion, I, I would perhaps suggest to budget the Sapphire sponsorship, and if other council members would like to pull from their funds, that they can move up to the Ruby sponsorship, then at least, I mean, we do have nine hundred dollars or so that we could move, put towards another table sponsorship, and that nine hundred of which other council people will have to use their outreach monies to, um, supplement the next table. But at least that leaves a little bit of money for another table sponsorship without adjusting a budget and dipping in. So I would, I would, uh, recommend that we budget the Sapphire sponsorship, and if there's enough council that wanna move it to the Ruby, they can do that with their outreach.
Well, that was the other option, which is fine, and Janice, could you send out an email to everybody if you're on, if you're with that, and she'll ask who's interested in contributing some of their outreach money up to the five thousand, so, would that be okay, if everybody, if you got an email from Janice, so you don't feel like you're being pressured?
No, no.
So I'm okay with the two, two thousand fifty-five, if some members of council be a help, help to, help me and help Joe bump it up to the Ruby, and, and be a special, um, support for the JCMH from the city of Wheat Ridge.
And, and one other thing, I'm sorry to, uh, but, but I also think that this doesn't necessarily have to be the end either, if we find that, you know, there's some budget savings and some things that we've done, or even our own personal outreach, you know, come September or whatever it may be, that we, you know, we could still donate money to Jefferson County, um, Mental Health from our, you know, that this doesn't have to be the end of our donations. But it, it's just so early in the year to spend it all at once.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or suggestions? So we're gonna go with the two-thousand-fifty-five motion. Hopefully, we'll, we can get a, get some cash donated from our city council outreach budget to bump it up to a Ruby sponsorship. Um, and we had a motion that was made, it was seconded. Please poll the council on item number seven.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Uh, thank you. Item number eight, Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the city of Wheat Ridge to the Colorado Congressional Delegation concerning stormwater regulations. The Environmental Protection Scene and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are currently moving forward on storm regulations that would carry in, in financial impacts to business owners and communities. At Tower, the Colorado Clean Water Coalition has requested the city send a letter to the delegation asking Congress to direct the EPA only to implement new stormwater rules that incorporate flexibility for geographic-specific and cost-effective solutions. Um, we have, um, the draft letter is in attachment, and, uh, it's my hope that council will support that. I think there's a need for our community to join the other communities that are asking the federal government to consider our needs prior to writing one rule, one size-fits-all mandate with unfunded down on municipalities like ours. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the city of Wheat Ridge to the Colorado Congressional Delegation concerning stormwater regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, it was seconded by Ms. Langberly and Mr. Steitz. Discussion, Mr. Pond?
Uh, while I agree with a lot of the language in this letter, I don't agree with all of it. The good news is, of course, it's not specifically coming from me, it's coming from you. Uh, so I won't be voting for this, just because I think there's a few pieces of language in here that, that I think are superfluous and not really necessary. in here that, that I think are superfluous and not really necessary. I don't know that it's worth getting into that. Again, I just wanted to be clear why I, I won't vote for it.
Now, it will go on mayor and city council letterhead, but if council approves it as a body, then it's still a policy by the, by the, okay. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Pond voting no.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I've asked the city attorney to provide an update on our Comcast franchise this evening, so I will defer to him.
Council, in sort of an effort to be time-efficient and possibly not have to spend time in a study session talking about something which I think is pretty, pretty easy to address, let me give you a few points about our Comcast cable franchise. It was entered into in two thousand one, and it expires oddly enough, April first of this year, so expires on April Fool's Day, coming right up. We based that franchise at that time on the mod, the GMTC model that was being used around the state, the, let's see, but GMTC's now been renamed as the CCUA, the Colorado Cable Users Association, I think, something like that. In any event, we would like to be able to defer and extend this franchise for a year while we're waiting for Denver and Aurora to complete their franchise negotiations with Comcast. And it's our view, staffs, you and I agree with them, that we'll learn a great deal, Denver and Aurora can fight, pardon me, fight some battles for us on their nickel. And the, the truth is that if we went forward now, we'd just be hearing from Comcast, well, you know, we're working with Denver and Aurora on that, and can you wait? Or we'd, we'd just sort of get involved in that one way or another. And we believe the better way to get involved in that is to not, and to instead ask that, and Comcast is fine with this, extend the franchise, probably till, for a little more than a year, to give us the time to let Denver and Aurora finish up their franchise negotiations. I think that will make ours a lot easier. The franchise was approved, and by the way, Thornton and Lakewood and Arvada are also expiring soon this year, around the same time summer that we are, and they're waiting as well. And so, what we'll need to do, because the franchise itself was approved by ordinance, an extension can only be approved by ordinance. I'm happy to answer questions, and you can defer to a study session if you like, but if I can get a direction that we can just bring it forward as an ordinance extending the franchise on the same terms for a little over a year to allow us to have Denver and Aurora finish their negotiations and us to finish ours up, I'd appreciate it.
Would you like to make that motion?
Just to direct me to prepare that, thank you.
Mr., motion by Mr. Reinhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demott to bring that forward for ordinance on first reading?
Yes, ordinance on first reading, yeah.
Mr. Starker?
Would you go for twelve months, or sixteen, or eighteen months, extension on that?
I think what, what, I don't think we need the time, but I'd like to be able to go to December of two thousand fourteen. That'll be honestly, a lot more time than we need, but, you know, if Denver and Aurora's process slows down, I, I'd rather, our current franchise isn't hurting us, there's nothing in it that I'm dying to change, you know, that is really harming us right now, so I think that's the data I'd like to use.
Twelve thirty-one?
Yes, of two thousand fourteen, yeah.
We'll start as soon as we can, the process of starting negotiations, so if we get done sooner, we could, we could always have, adopt it sooner, correct?
Yes, of course.
Anything else, Mr. Duff? City attorneys' matters?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
City clerks' matters?
Yes, I actually have a couple of things. I apologize for that earlier unpreparedness. The deputy clerk was sick all last week, and he's still sick. I hope he gets better, but it was bound to happen that I would forget something. Two things that I wanted to bring up to you was, and in the past, you've struggled with how to address rental housing issues, whether to hire a consultant or to address maintenance issues and so on. And in talking at, or listening, actually, not talking, listening at clerk or clerk meetings, conferences, Commerce City had a similar issue. And they, what they did was, they started with a citizen task force. And their issues are not exactly the same as ours, they, I think they have way more residential, sort of lower-priced residential motels than we do. But the generic issue of what to do about the maintenance of rental properties is, is kind of there. And their clerk has sent to me a boatload of documents about, this has been a couple of years ago, and I apologize, I didn't look at the dates, but they set up a citizen task force, they had just regular Joe residents, and they had realtors, and just different kind of people who had come at it from a different angle, and has minutes to their meeting, you know, who was on it, what, what they were there as, whether it was like realtor, staff person, a council person, a citizen, a tenant, a landlord, things like that. And then some of the steps that they went through. And I had briefly mentioned this to, to Patrick, it's been some weeks ago before I had the, the documents. And city would be glad to look at them, but I just thought that a citizen task force would be a, a less expensive way to begin to address the problem, and they may, not necessarily, their goal wouldn't necessarily be, oh, let's, you know, hire somebody and let's create standards, and let's create a big bureau and stuff, but it, it might be worthwhile to see what just citizens come up with, who don't, who aren't doing it for a paycheck, but really do it because, because they just care about the community. And so, I wondered if you'd be interested in this, and I don't quite know how to handle, if you are preparing the documents, if you'd want to look at them first, do it at a study session, I don't know what, if you're interested. So, that's one of the things, I don't know if you want to discuss this before I bring up the other one, or just wait.
Mr. Reinhardt, you want to say anything about that, or?
No.
Why don't you just meet with Patrick and the mayor pro tem and see what they decide for a study session?
Okay, if it's, but does it sound like something you'd be interested in, you'd just, you know, kind of looking at, that they're, what they did and what they came up with? Or is it, nah, forget it, and I will save the brain damage?
If you have the backup material as the mayor suggests, I'd be glad to meet with you and Patrick, and we'll try and figure out how to bring that back to council, or whether it should come back to council. We'll, we'll work with you on that.
Okay, good, copy it all off. And then the other thing was, that I learned that there are a number of particularly larger cities who have regular reports at their study sessions from boards and commissions. And I know in, in my year of service now, I've seen, the Cultural Commission has given very valuable reports. Diane, Rob has come in twice now to update the council on what's going on, and, and I just, from a personal standpoint, I thought those were very good presentations and good interaction, and valuable for you. And come to find out that in some other cities, there's lots of other boards and commissions who come to the council yearly or twice a year to sort of have some kind of personal FaceTime and report on what they've been doing, whether it be from the chair, or meet with the whole, a whole board, come in and sit down and talk. I, I thought the biannual reports were, or is that biannual or semi, semi-annual reports were good. And so, that was just an idea that's out there that I thought might be good for you to keep closer contact with those boards and commissions. It's coming up timely, you're going to appoint them, and then, you know, we're here from them again unless something really important comes up, and probably won't, they won't, they won't address the whole council until three years from now when they get reappointed, and you never hear from them again. So, I, I just, I thought that was kind of a neat idea, and it might be something that you want to consider having happen, and I'll just present the idea, and the council president, you guys can take it from there, so.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Really quick, I want to let everyone know about the next Live Local Wheat Ridge, Live Local Harvest Film Fest installment happening on the last Wednesday of February, February twenty-seventh, at the Active Adult Center. Potluck at six thirty, movie and talk with the farmer, starting at seven. I was unable to attend the, the last one on January thirtieth, however, the reports were that it was well-attended, and that everyone actually really was engaged in not only the movie, but the, the talking to one of our local farmers. So, just encouragement for everyone to look at that and think about showing up at the Active Adult Center at six thirty on the last Wednesday of the month.
Thanks. Ms. Jay?
I've got a couple of things. I did attend that, the local event, that was, it was well-attended, and people enjoyed it. Two things, Forty-Fourth and Kendall Park Design Input Meetings, the, the, the public is invited to meetings regarding the new park at Forty-Fourth and Kendall, these are meetings regarding the planning, the design of it. They'll be held at the Active Adult Center, which is at sixty-sixty-three West Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Wednesdays will be three meetings, six thirty P.M., February twentieth, March sixth, and March thirteenth. So, we've had some requests to attend those, and this is that opportunity. And the other thing I wanted to, to mention was, don't, don't be saying that you're, that he went to Jared to buy your jewelry for, for, for Valentine's Day, because we have a couple of great jewelers right here in Wheat Ridge. We've also got two great florists right here in Wheat Ridge, so let me, let me beat out Mike and say, you know, find it in Wheat Ridge, okay?
Find it and buy it.
Find it and buy it, right here.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, actually, I have one too, and I attended Mr. Pond's event as well, which was actually very interesting, although it's probably more in his genre of, of issues than mine. But it was an interesting, good topic, and a great turnout, a lot of people very interested in this. But, and the only other one I want to do is, I had the real pleasure of, I think, of going to sort of the opening event for a new business in Wheat Ridge that meets a lot of our, our criteria that we're looking for. They, they moved here from California, set up a business, and their, their business is really appropriate. It's a, it's a family-owned business, a couple that came in here, Chris and Amanda Coke, and it's called First Light Home Care. And what they do is, is provide services for seniors that can't, that can't get out, and they've been in business less than six months here. They had their ceremony for your heart estates last weekend, and, and they're already up to fifteen employees, so I'd like to welcome them again to our town, because they followed Mr. Stites' advice. I'm sure he was sending them emails in Huntington Beach, California, where they're from.
Thanks. Mr. Demott?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Starker?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah, and I got a new one tonight, I don't know, next time it snows, and I, and I've seen this fellow for about the last three or four years, and why I've not stopped and talked to him, but there's a, evidently, he's retired, he has his own shovel, but when it snows, he'll start at Wadsworth, and he will go all the way down to Kipling on the south side of Thirty-Eighth, and make sure the walk is clean. Darnest thing I've ever saw, and if anybody, pay attention next time, and you'll see him out there. And I would love to know his name, because I would love to give him an award, because that's really, this day and age, to get somebody that does that on his own is absolutely amazing. So, if anybody sees him next time, stop and get his name, let us know, because I really would like to bring him in and give him some type of award. He kind of goes along with my favorite couple that goes out there and picks up trash once a month, and I don't know their names, but I really think that's neat, and they take pride in their community. Would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, see one of us, we'd be glad to do it. Positive thing, you know, everybody knows their neighbors in the summertime, but there's absolutely no reason that they shouldn't know them in the wintertime. So, you know, you might go over and, and make sure that they're, you know, fine, especially with the cold weather and particular things, because you're going to get to know them in the summer anyway, but do it in the winter. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge, thank you.
Thank you. I have to admit, I've seen that gentleman on Thirty-Eighth, and he's actually, when it gets dry, he'll still bust up the ice along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, in the gutter. He'll go down, up and down Thirty-Eighth Avenue, knock out the ice so that it doesn't cause problems, so whoever he is, thank you, and I, maybe the next time I see him, now that I know he's doing it all up and down Thirty-Eighth, I'll stop, because he's right near the high school sometimes.
Was he a former mayor, is that the deal?
No, no. I'm not doing that. I'm not, I'm not lobbying for that job. I just wanted to remind, if you have, if you're a parent and you have a high school student at Wheat Ridge, we have parent-teacher conferences from three o'clock to eight o'clock Thursday, so please join us, and, in the gym. Also, I was doing my fuzzy math here, and so if we got two thousand fifty-five from the account, and I was hoping that if each council member, I know it's early in the year, I don't want to ask for a lot of money for outreach, but if each of you could do two fifty, that would give us four thousand fifty-five, and I would do a thousand from my public outreach. So, Janice will be sending out an email, if you're interested, from two fifty of each of you, that would be a minor amount of money from your budget, so let Janice know. And thanks a lot, we're adjourned.